Thirty minutes. We have two people here to sign up tonight. The first one is Rosemary Champion. Please go forward and state your name and address for the book.
Good evening. Rosemary Champion, 1168 White Level Road, Lewisburg, North Carolina. The two things I wanted to comment on about tonight, the first is something you've already done, which is your consent agenda. And I've been trying to do some research and figure out, because I like to know what's going on, what we can do, what we can't do, and, you know, what can be included in it. So some of my research, and I looked at the general statutes, I looked at Robert's Rule of Order, and I looked at the LGC guidelines. And what they say is a consent agenda, or calendar as it's called some places, are items added to an agenda that don't need any discussion or debate. Items are things like approval of the minutes, appointments to committees, so y'all could take your appointments that you have at the end of the meeting and put them on your agenda, consent agenda, approving donations, financial reports that do not require a vote. And I'm thinking if it's, if you're considering approving that vote, you would have to answer that. And although the board meets and discusses this, out of the public eye, every two or three of you at a time, because I know you can't all get together at the same time, leaves the taxpayer out of the conversation. So stuff comes and it's put on the consent agenda. The taxpayers deserve to have these discussions in the commissioners meeting and listen to the details with all commissioners in the room at the same time. That way, every commissioner gets the same story. That's the only way that we know that everyone has a same decision. The consent agenda you just approved spends several million dollars of the taxpayers' money, and these should be addressed in a formal commissioners meeting and not just a consent agenda. And that's my opinion. And the other question I had is on the budget portal. We haven't heard anything about the budget portal, except that was on the website. And please go, and I hope when you do your discussion about the budget tonight, your manager will let you know what comments were on the. Thank you.
Next person, Dan Scott. Good evening, Commissioner Scott, Spitala eighty-four thirty-five, Highway fifty-six. Just wanted to give you another update. I'm excited. My group, like I said, took the EMR course, the guy that failed, he is done. Now we have six waiting on criminal background, one from out of state that had moved to Franklin County and wanted to join our group. So we're building a great team. And then I, I put out, we didn't have a boat in the area, but we got a boat now, a sixteen footer, has been registered and stuff for use for disaster if we need it in Franklin County. Other than the one at Bun, there's only two aluminum boats I know of in Franklin County, and a small one at White Level. And so we're, we're working together to make a great team if we're needed after finding out, you know, the last disaster that we had. And so working together, making progress with EMS and Mercy Management and other agencies in the county, Lewisburg Police Department, when we done the run, they said, I couldn't have done it without you guys. And so that's what we want to hear. And that means we're doing a great job. And thank y'all for giving us the opportunity to be there to do this job. Without y'all, we couldn't do it. And on the other hand, I'm still got a few slots left for the golf tournament, which is a little ways out, but we're trying to get everything organized and that way we know what we got. And, you know, we're looking to have a great time with that. There've been a lot of questions asked, and we've answered them. Some of y'all I still haven't sent stuff to, but I'll be sending it to you to try to get you to help support us with a whole and, and all that. Just been busy. My mother-in-law just come home from breaking her hip. So just been busy trying to get stuff ready at home for her. And, but we're getting there. But we appreciate each and every one of you, and thank you for giving us the opportunity to do what we do here in Franklin County. I mean, my, my heart goes out to Franklin County. I, I heard this the other day, a guy was talking about living and dying. You, you die one time, but you actually die twice, he said. You die physically, but when the folks stop talking about the great things that you do is when you die the second. And so I hope everybody remembers me when I'm gone, that what, how much progress I put into Franklin County. Thank y'all.
Number thirty, action item three A, fifty-year plan six budget. Board will discuss fifty-year plan six budget and consider approval.
Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the FY twenty-six budget where the staff presented, letting a general fund rate of fifty point five cents per one hundred and five evaluation property listed in taxes as a paying rate first, forty point five. Approval of a general fund budget totaling one hundred and thirty-one million four hundred and fifty-three thousand sixty-one dollars. An approval of a capital improvement fund with a general fund, and a solid waste enterprise fund as presented from FY twenty-six to FY thirty, public police enterprise fund as presented from FY twenty-six to FY thirty-five. That's planning documents and approval of FY twenty-six.
Do you have a motion? Do you have a second? Further discussion? I, I have. Just, I like to, I myself do approve doing the budget with no tax increase. I've been voting for tax increase thirty-four years. But I like this one here, where that doesn't include a tax increase. Going to pick up that I have commissioners getting a pay increase, salary increase. And I wish we could leave that same as last year. On New Orleans. Applicate brings in my pay, I'm taking the vote for, do approve the budget. See, I would, entertain maybe would go on that part about order commissioners get paid increase. I'll make that into motion. Do you have a motion? Mr. Chairman, my turn. Does the person who made the motion have to draw the motion? That one just filled the order off.
I guess he can make the motion. He really needs to make the motion.
What about eight thirty? You're making a motion to amend motion this floor? Yes.
What you have on the floor currently is a motion to approve the budget with a second. So that's the motion that's currently on the floor. And so what he's asking is to amend the budget, which would mean that you would have to vote on his motion to amend the budget before you could then go to the motion to approve the budget.
Okay. Is there any further discussion on the amendment motion?
I'll speak if I can, just from the chairman, so that people have clarity. I think Ms. Champion mentioned clarity in the room. This is part of the final steps of the pay classification study that was done for the employees. It's also trying to create the opportunity so that people that are less fortunate can actually afford to maybe run for office one day. But if we keep the pay down what it was twenty-five years ago, you can laugh if you want. But who's going to come to work for that kind of money? And the amount of time that it takes commissioners to give of their time, where's the opportunity? So it's important that everyone's pay goes up, its inflation goes up, and all those other things go up. And elected officials shouldn't be any different in a small county setting. At least, that's my opinion. So at the end of the day, how do we better encourage others to want to come serve with the amount of time that they're spending away from their family or their friends, opportunity to work a part-time job somewhere else? They could actually get involved in, in local government and local politics. It'd be worth their while, it'd be worth their commitment of time. So that's my, that's my reason for encouraging this to, to move forward. It's not for, not for any other reason.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Mark, please.
Oh, you know, Mr. Schreiber, I, I totally agree with you in, in this. But in doing so, and, you know, self-patting ourselves, I would recommend that we come up with a number, a pay increase that would take effect in twenty twenty-eight. That way, it does not give the appearance that any of us are looking out for ourselves. And it could possibly benefit us at that time, but we don't know that.
If I may, just provide some legal advice on that. The, the way commissioners' but salary is, or pay is established is by budget year, and it's done at the time that the budget is passed. So you would not be able to do, do that, you can't bind a future budget that way. I'm sorry, Mr. Speed.
Would, well, would, if, if we approved this tonight, would that salary not continue on and on and on?
Well, each budget year, you, you could evaluate, you could reevaluate the pay every time you do a budget year. But I think traditionally, you don't do that.
Right.
I would say, and I think the staff researched this issue and determined that Franklin County was pretty far behind in what commissioners typically get paid.
Chairman Bunnup, I could speak to it as well. So I, when this was first brought to me, being a fairly new commissioner, elected in November, my first initial thought was no. And, and then I gave it a little bit more thought about this. I'm thirty-nine, I've got three kids, own my own business, been very blessed on that front. So I didn't do this for the money in any way. And so my first thought was no. There's no reason, right? It's a, it's a minimal pay increase. You know, I'm blessed enough, and, and not trying to sound disconnected, that it, it's not going to affect one, me one way or the other. But I did think, and I'm, I'm very grateful for the board that's sitting up here. I'm the youngest on this. And so their, their wisdom and their knowledge, all the way up and down this board, I don't take for granted. However, I hope that they'll say the same thing about me being in my thirties, being a late millennial, that I bring a perspective to the county that they value. And that's an, and that's an important perspective. To be quite honest, I don't know how many thirty-eight, thirty-nine, forty, forty-one-year-olds that are in my position would do this. To be, to be real honest, it's kind of silly. And I say that jokingly, of course. Happy to do it and happy to represent the people of Franklin County. So if, if that pay increase on the left or the right, get somebody that's, brings a different perspective, brings a different position in life, has young kids that are in the school system, or not in the school system, mine's not, but a lot of people do. The stay-at-home mom, whose kids are maybe teenagers and she's got more time. I think that opens windows and doors to people like that that may give this some consideration. Because ultimately, what I want is for the best and the most talented people to be sitting in front of you and leading the county. That's what the county needs, and that's what the county deserves. And we're a very quick-growing county with more and more stuff that's coming across our desks that's going to require more and more time. And then so in ten and fifteen, twenty years, I don't know that, I don't know that a guy like myself's going to be able to run a business for fifty or sixty hours a week, quite frankly, and be able to do this job the right way. So I, I'm open to discussions, obviously. Commissioner Speed, that didn't sound like that was going to work. You know, fine to open ideas like that. Obviously, legally, we'd have to see. But that's my position that I'm coming from, is that I hope that this opens more doors for people sitting on that side.
Okay. But, Ms. Brown.
You all know how much time I spend. I know y'all spend a lot of time, but I spend a lot of time being a commissioner. Our pay is not very good. We don't, we don't make a full salary anyway. The pay is not very good. I probably drive more than the, the transportation allowance, I know I do. I pay my own gas because I don't get reimbursed for my gas as much as I drive. Get Henderson tomorrow to a meeting for the county. I'd, I'd spend, I spent a couple hours this morning studying the agenda for tonight and reading all the pages that come with the agenda. And also reading emails from constituents this morning and returning messages and things like that. And, I mean, it's a lot of time that we spend being a commissioner. I don't know how you guys that have a full-time job, if I had a full-time job, I could not do that. I, I could not work and do this job the way I do it. There's no way I could hold a full-time job and do what I do. Because I go to, you know, y'all know how many meetings, I tell you some of the things I go to. But I'm always attending meetings, several meetings every week. I have two tomorrow. One during the day, and one, one in Henderson, and one at night. Wednesday, Thursday, I mean, I have meetings all the time. And I know you do too. So that, and our pay is not a whole lot. Y'all don't think about, don't think we make a whole lot of money, because we don't. So when we get a little bit of a raise, it's not a whole lot of a raise, and every little bit does help, because we're paying out of our pockets, you know, for a lot of this. We don't make but a couple dollars an hour if we divide your hours up with the pay. So I'm, I'm for the increase, because we don't get reimbursed now, we do. And nobody, I'm telling you, if anybody's thinking about running for commissioner, if you have a full-time job, then you will not be able to do the job like you would like to, because you have to go to work. Unless you can take all the time you want to work, you know, to, to take off, then you can't go to all the things that the commissioners are asked to go to and wanted to go to. And it is, I mean, there's just no way you can do it with a full-time job. So I'm, I'm for the increase, because maybe, you know, people would run, good people can run for commissioner if they're paid a little bit more in the future.
Okay. But almost break.
Mm-hmm, it's just a lot of work.
Mr. Chairman, if, if I may, you know, certainly I like the thought of the position being available to a broader spectrum. And, and pay is a factor in that. But I don't think the amount of this pay increase would solve that problem. I think it would take a lot more to do that. But I do, I do like that concept.
It does move it up, though. It starts moving a little bit forward.
That's, that's the thing too, I agree with you. And that's, that's the problem, just like I made a comment last budget meeting about the water rate, how the water rate hasn't moved in twenty-some years. That's a mistake of this, one of the mistakes of this county is they're not taking small baby steps along the way to be prepared for the next, for when it's time. And this is why we do the pay set in classification, because we do a market analysis, but then we work on it for five or eight years, and we don't move and do anything. And then all of a sudden, our employees aren't getting paid what they should be being paid, and then we got to play the catch-up game. And if we continue to leave the commissioners' pays out of this for, for the times to come in the future, just making it a bigger hurdle later on, instead of making it a small incremental step all along to create the trues it up. And I think truing it up is the intention of, and the spirit of why we're doing this. And I think everybody's points are, are well taken, so.
Okay, anybody else? All right, so we're going to call for a vote on Mr. Ford's motion to amend Mr. Schreiber's motion. So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No. No.
Motion fails. Now we have a motion on the floor to approve the budget. And that was already seconded, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Action item three B, Public Safety Radio System Change Order Number Four. Chris D. Sharon.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Oh, let's get all my papers spread out here, so. Tonight, I'm here to give you a brief status update on the radio project and to present change order four, which is a no-cost change order. It basically just finalizes the coverage acceptance test plan procedures and provides an updated schedule and updated contractual deadlines. So we'll start with this nice little map. This is the status of all the fourteen sites of the new system as color-coded to show their status. Green indicates the site's fully installed. Yellow indicates that the site has equipment installed in the equipment shelter, but not antennas on the tower yet, and red has neither of those. But you'll see on here, eleven of the sites are green, and they're all connected with green lines. That part of the system is up and running and going through its own testing. Pilot and Hightland Forest are both yellow. We have equipment in the shelter of those, but they have not had their antennas connected in yet. And then Bun, of course, is in the construction phase. This picture, just a brief, this is what we've done. I mean, it's, I could give you probably a hundred slides of different pictures, but I don't think y'all want to see all that. So you see the New Hope site that we built, the Youngsville Elementary site, the Molton site, the Novo site, the Royal site, the Epsom site. All those were brand-new towers that we built. And then the Margaret site, we added an equipment shelter, but that site is owned by the state. And then you see in the, in between the Molton and the Royal, I didn't put a name at the top of that, I'm sorry, it kind of blends together, that's the Bun site. So the Bun site is in progress. We were able to get the building permit for that issued on May fourteenth, and we began work there on May the nineteenth. The foundation has been poured for the tower, and the foundation for the shelter and generator has also been poured, so that one is moving right along. We expect to be completed by mid-July for that, weather permitting, of course. Hightland Forest, that one is a site that's owned by the state, and we currently co-locate on that tower with the system. We had to make some modifications to this tower to ensure that the structural integrity of the tower was able to handle the additional load we were adding to it, because for a time, this will actually hold both of our radio systems while we're making the transition, so. Once these modifications are done and verified, which I was advised today on the conference call, the modifications are done, and they're being inspected this afternoon by the engineer. Once that is verified, then we get a notice to proceed, proceed from the state to hang the antennas and then get that site looped into the network, all again, weather permitting. The Pilot site is another co-locate site that is owned by Duke Energy. Again, we had to make some modifications to this site as well. We already have the notice to proceed there, we're just waiting on the actual parts that we need to add to the tower, so that one is expected by the end of June. Okay, so that's where we are, brings us change order four. We have been moving right along, we haven't been up here giving you updates like we started out, but it's been a lot of construction. Weather has been very challenging and continues to be challenging. That's why you keep hearing, when you say weather permitting, because it doesn't rain until we start trying to pour concrete, so. So change order four, as I said earlier, is a no-cost change order, provides the final coverage acceptance test plan procedures to use to verify that the contracted coverage requirements have been met prior to cut over and system acceptance. It contains four different tests. The bit error rate test and signal to strength test is conducted with test equipment and vehicles that are driven throughout the county, and it just takes measurements. And then you have the other two tests, the voice quality and critical building test, which is more labor-intensive, requires us to send teams out to do back-and-forth phrase testing. Can you hear me now, back and forth between us and the dispatchers on the new consoles? So that one definitely is more intensive. So that's the coverage acceptance test. The other part of this change order replaces the original project scheduled, dated schedule that reflects best-case dates and contractual milestone dates. So in this table, we have some of those pulled out of the official schedule and highlighted for you. The best-case complete column is our goal. However, it is dependent on factors such as weather. But the contractual dates are the ones that must be met, and we can enforce under the terms of the contract, excluding obviously any force majeure provisions, like a natural disaster or something. So by this schedule, I would expect to be coming to you September, Octoberish meeting to present the coverage test results to you and ask for you to approve them for us to proceed with cut over. Once we cut over, then we have other things that we have to take down the old system. We have to put in another microwave link that's contained in the current system today. And then you're looking November, December, we come back for final system acceptance, so. Tonight, just looking for your approval of change order four and to give the county manager authorization to execute all the documents. Any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Okay, any questions? Any questions for Ms. Sharon?
Yeah, I had one.
Yes, sir.
I know we had that little issue down in the New Hope area about the coverage of the antennas. Has that been resolved, or still being tested?
We haven't done the official test yet, because the entire system's not online.
Okay.
So once we do the official test, that is, it's laid out very particularly what that's going to happen in that area, in each grid, and what fails, and if, how we proceed to the next step.
That's forthcoming.
Yes.
Okay.
But I can say a potential site has been identified in the event that it is needed.
Okay.
Okay, any other question? Here and then, what's the pleasure of the board?
We have to approve the, as, as request, action item, as request, how about that?
All right, we have a motion?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Letter C, Utility Allocation Extensions. Chris Dorby.
Evening, commissioners. Presenting to you the Utility Advisory Committee's recommendations from the meeting that was held June fourth, twenty twenty-five. All of the requests tonight are for extensions of their current allocation. I will go through each item individually and ask for separate motions and votes on each one. The first one is the extension for Holden Village. It's in the town limits of Youngsville, it's a fifty-unit project. It's a new project. The original record date was March thirty-one of twenty twenty-five. We held our UAC meeting on the fourth of June, with, there will be a new, new record date of March thirty-first of twenty twenty-six. The Utility Advisory Committee recommend awarding, accepting, and extending the allocation request and voted unanimously to approve it.
Okay. It's the pleasure of the board.
I made the motion to approve it. Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
The second one is Mason Glen Phase One, it's within the town limits of Franklinton. It's a new project, fifty units. The original record date was May thirty-first of twenty twenty-five. The new record date will be March thirty-first of twenty twenty-five. And I misspoke, the original record date is March thirty-first. The UAC on the fourth of June voted unanimously to recommend approving of the extension.
Okay, what's the pleasure of the board? Okay, what's the pleasure of the board?
Make the motion.
Okay. Have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Next up is the extension of College Street Townhomes. It's in Franklinton. It's, uh, fifty units. It's a new project. Uh, the same original record date of March thirty-first, twenty twenty-five, with a new record date of March thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. Uh, the UAC voted unanimously based, um, staff's recommendation to deny the request for an extension.
I'd make a motion that we do approve the, um, the request for the extension.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Um, the next is the extension for Wren Farms Apartments. There, it's in the town of Youngsville Limits. Uh, it's fifty units, new, um, it's a new project. The original request date, March thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. New record date of March thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. Uh, the UAC, um, staff's recommendation was to award. UAC voted unanimously to award the extension.
Motion to approve the extension.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Okay, um, the next project is the extension of Wren's, Wren Farms, uh, within the town limits of Youngsville. Uh, it's a new project, fifty units. Uh, the original record date, March thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. New record date, March thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. UAC, um, voted unanimously based on the staff's recommendation to extend the allocation.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
The next is an extension for Wren Villas. And it's in the town of Youngsville, uh, fifty units. It's a new project. The original record date, March thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. New record date, March thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. UAC, uh, voted unanimously to award the extension.
Motion to approve Wren Villas.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Doherty.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And I will prepare the award letters, uh, the remainder of this. We can get them sent out to each of the awardees.
Thank you, sir. Brings us to item number four, appointments. The Agricultural Advisory Board. The board is asked to appoint slash reappoint the following individuals. Appoint Billy Wood Junior from the Golden Mine Township, and Thomas Dean to the Cypress Town Township, and reappoint David Smith from the Hayesville Township.
Please to approve.
Second. Have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Then we have the Jury Commission. The board is asked to consider reappointing George McGee to the Jury Commission for a two-year term.
I make a motion to reappoint George McGee.
Second. Have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Brings us to item number five, Board Manager and Clerk's Comments. Madam Attorney, do you have anything tonight?
The only thing that I would say to the board is that, while I appreciate the, um, that were made regarding the consent agenda, um, they are guidelines, but it is up to the board as to what goes on that consent. Just a quick reminder that next month, we have one meeting, on July fourteenth, and it starts at the.
All right.
Mr. Floyd? I just have one thing I'd like to comment on. I too have lots of concerns, especially with us going to one meeting each month about this consent agenda. Maybe by nature, it's being double the size of it is now, since we're going from two meetings to one meeting. And it does concern me. One couldn't help but think. One vote carrying all of this, a lot of stuff to cover without any discussion or, or, you know, on a regular agenda. Hope we're real careful with that in the coming future. Issue with only one meeting. Hopefully, we'll be able to cover everything all right in one meeting. I know we're going to be getting started an hour earlier, but still, one would think you'd almost need twice as much time. But I guess, as they say, we'll see.
Absolutely.
Anyway, that's all I have for tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Floyd. Mr. Davis?
Yeah, I think it's important, um, for whoever's watching this, for everybody, uh, in the room tonight and who may be watching this online, that, um, I think there's some, uh, maybe a little bit of appreciation needs to be sent, uh, to a particular individual's way, um, regarding the budget. So, uh, everyone up here, um, except Commissioner May, I guess, but, uh, you may have even been more familiar with it, have been through a budget process before. Um, one of the things, uh, that when I ran, uh, a lot of the public, a lot of the, even the people inside government came to me and said, "You better, you know, hold on to your jacket during the budget process," right? I mean, that's just what I was told multiple times. Um, and it is an undertaking. It's a huge task, um, to, to do it the right way, uh, to spend taxpayers' money wisely, um, to make sure it's not bloated, uh, all of the things that, in, in my opinion, if, if you fall on the left or the right, um, that you want done the right way. Um, so, I, I wanted, but I wanted to take a minute, and I wanted to kind of, um, just give, um, a little bit of praise to our interim county manager. Um, I did not know the importance of a county manager, to be honest with you. Last year at this time, I knew what they did, didn't know the, all the behind-the-scenes. I wasn't on this side of the table. So, to be real honest with you, it is a tall, tall task. It is a hard job. Um, a lot of stuff thrown his way, from department heads to county employees, to individual citizens, and then having to manage, uh, this board of seven different individuals, seven different personalities, seven different, seven different ways people think. Um, but Ryan, you did a, you did a phenomenal job, in my opinion. Um, somebody may disagree, but you did a phenomenal job, I think, leading. So, I think it's important for all of you guys out there, um, because I was on that side just last year, to, to see that, um, Ryan has done a phenomenal job in putting this budget together, meeting with department heads, having tough conversations. You, you like it or not, there's compromise. And he found compromise in, in a lot of different places that worked. Um, and, and both parties may not have been thrilled, but they walked away from it and, and got what they needed. So, anyway, I don't want to, I don't want to opine for too terribly long here, but I did want to give you a little bit of praise on that, man. You did a, you did a phenomenal job and, and really proud to, uh, work on you on that one, so.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, Vice Chairman Schrupp.
Uh, I think it would be important, um, being that this is the last meeting in June, um, if we did not recognize a longstanding county employee who is, uh, moving on to a bigger opportunity. Um, so, Mr. Floyd, Floyd, if you're back there, can you hear me? Floyd, come on out. Floyd is leaving to go to, uh, Rocky Mount after almost, what, twenty years here in the, in the county? And, um, we greatly appreciate everything that you've done. Um, IT has definitely grown a lot in twenty-some years. Uh, I just think about what it takes for me to get on my devices now versus what it did back then. Um, so, I just would be remiss if I didn't catch you before you get away from here, uh, as we kind of start the, the summer season and people get going and doing, get in different places. So, I just personally want to say thank you for, uh, the time you spent with me to bring me aboard, um, and also to, to continue to support me in the things I don't know and understand, so, thank you.
Thank you very much, y'all. Remain in my heart now, Miss Franklin County, and I hope you have a good success going forward.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner May?
I, I agree with him. Floyd the man, he the man. Yeah.
All right, Commissioner Speed.
I mean, no comments.
Commissioner Bragg.
Um, I was working here when Floyd was hired, when he started. And he, he was very instrumental on getting us on the computers and getting our programs and our software. And I want to thank you, Floyd, because you, you've done an awesome job here. We hate to lose you. Um, also, I want to commend Ryan also for the budget. I did tell everything you said about Ryan and the budget, and the budget was so easy this year, so much easier than it's been since I've been a commissioner, anyway. So, I thank you for that. We did have a few meetings this month, um, since I saw y'all. Don't forget, we met three nights for the, um, Board of Equalization Review, y'all. We were all here, and we spent a lot of hours doing that for three nights since the last one. Um, extra from our board meeting, so, um, I just want to mention that. Um, Funky Town was held in Franklinton Saturday. That was a big event. Um, and the other thing I wanted to mention was that the, the budget portal was mentioned and was asked if we read it. And y'all remember that we have a wonderful clerk to the board. Thank you, Piston, because she sent us every comment on the budget portal. We were very well kept up with everything that was on there, the, the few comments and stuff, and we did receive those time. So, thank you, Piston. That's it.
Okay. Interim County Manager Ryan.
Also, I just want to say thank you for all the help with the budget. Uh, um, it has been a, uh, a learning experience for me as well, uh, being the first budget as the manager. And, um, I think it's, it's been a great experience. It's been good to talk to all the department heads and really just have a different perspective here and there side of things. And working through that, and as, as Fisher Davis mentioned, there are some compromises that have to be had on both sides, but it was good to have those conversations, listening to their goals, listening to their projects and what they're trying to achieve, be a part of that. So, I'll say thank you to department heads, thank you to our employees for making it all happen. Uh, thank you to the budget team, especially. Of course, thank you to our commissioners for helping us with all of that and providing that guidance we need. And last but not least, I'll say thank you to Mr. Floyd over there, who's, uh, served the county well and, uh, wish him good luck. Thanks for your turn, though.
Yes, sir. I too would like to recognize, uh, our interim county manager through a smoother budget process than has I have experienced in the last several years. And I do appreciate that very much. That brings us to item number six, our closed session. The board is asked to enter into closed session pursuant to following North Carolina general statutes, NCGS one-four-three-dash-three-one-eight-dot-one-one-A-three, Attorney-client Privilege, Privileged Communication, NCGS one-fourty-three-dash-three-one-eight-dot-one-one-A-four, Industry and Economic Development, NCGS one-fourty-three-dash-three-one-eight-dot-one-one-A-five, Real Property Purchase Contracts and Leases, and NCGS one-fourty-three-dash-three-one-eight-dot-one-one-A-six, Personnel. What's the pleasure?
Move to go into closed session.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
No.
I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to go back into open session.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we hire Ryan Preble as our county manager effective today.
I'm speaking at that.
All right. Is there any further discussion? Here and none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Congratulations, sir. I didn't join the meeting now.
Mark, we lost Mark. Mark, we gotta close out.
Okay, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. I have a motion in a second. All in favor say aye. Motion adjourned.